Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Tuesday, February 20th, 2024 meeting. We begin our meeting with the invocation, if we could have Pastor Leonard Himes come forward and lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, and if I could have everyone stand.
Good evening, let's bring together our following we thank you, Lord, as we come together and assemble upon this evening, so many, Lord, things to be grateful for in the midst of seemingly turmoil that surrounds our world and our nation. But, Lord, we're thankful tonight for thee and lift this meeting up, that you would bless, that you would lead, bless the administration, all those laboring even now as we assemble. And, Lord, we will certainly thank you and praise you in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. The following planning and zoning items were advertised on February 20th Board of Commission meeting but have been postponed by the applicant. That's Comp Amendment 23-03, Tashar Patel of McDonough, RZ 23-07, and RZ 23-08. If anyone is here for those particular planning and zoning matters, they have been postponed, and you are free to leave. Next item is our recognition of Henry County Emergency Management Specialist Carla Richter for receiving the 2023 Georgia Fire Inspector of the Year, Kevin Chas.
Hey, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Board. Each year, the Georgia Fire Inspectors Association acknowledges an outstanding fire inspector as the Inspector of the Year with the Georgia M. Lanier Memorial Fire Inspector Award. Carla Richter worked in the field of fire code enforcement, community risk reduction, and public safety education throughout her professional career. She has served nearly a decade on the Georgia Fire Inspectors Association Board of Directors. She has also held a position on the committee chair for the annual Georgia Fire Safety Symposium. Carla is a certified fire inspector and a certified fire and life safety educator. She works diligently to make Georgia a safer place to live, work, and raise a family. We are thrilled to have Carla on our emergency management team here in Henry County, and would like to congratulate her for receiving the 2023 M. Lanier Memorial Fire Inspector of the Year Award. She received this award from the Governor's Office at the Capitol a couple of weeks ago, and we'd like to bring her up to accept it here in front of her Henry County family. Carla.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff.
Next item on the agenda is Presentation of Pavement Evaluation. Presentation by our Public Work Cluster Lead, Rocky Romero.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. So tonight, we want to talk about how DOT rates basically the roads. So back in 2020, we contracted with IMS. It's the company that did the work for us, and basically, they scanned the roads and did an analysis of all the roads in the county. For those in the public, we have in the county 1,159 miles. Our final report was received June 7th of 2021. Here, you can see the equipment they use. It's a van, the van has multiple cameras. Those cameras are taking shots every so often and taking all that information. Prior to this, we would do this visually. This is a lot more accurate than just driving down the road, because my interpretation might be different from somebody else. Here, we take that arrow out. So what are we looking? We're looking at cracks. Cracks could be what we call alligator cracks, longitudinal cracks, transfer cracks, rotting. Rotting is when the wheel kind of sinks down on the pavement, roughness, how rough it rides, and pavement distress. That could be patching, raveling, etc. This image shows you what the computer in that van is doing. It's taking all that information and generating some numbers and giving us a grade. And just like in school, if you have 100, that's an A. If you have a 1, that's an F. So excellent, 85 to 100, so once we pave a road, that's 100, and should stay in excellent condition for hopefully five to eight years. Then we have very good, that's 70 to 85. Then we have good, you see the numbers, fair. Now, when we get to the fair, that the road is looking rough. It's not looking, it's not too good. Marginal, poor is very bad, of course, and then we have very poor. When it's very poor, it's almost like dirt, just about a zero. I like this image, because this image, this paragraph shows you where we at in the county. Excellent, 17%, very good, 7.6%, good, 12.7%. But if you look at marginal, that's 21%, and poor is 20%. So you add the poor and the marginal, that's about 40, 41%. Now, we have 1,100, little bit over, oh, a little bit under 1,200 miles in the county. That's another graph showing where we stand. Very far right is your excellent, the far left is your poor marginal. As you can see, the poor marginal and fair are winning. We'd like to have the excellent and the very good much higher than what we show here. I'll take any questions?
Are there any questions from the board?
I don't have any.
I have a question.
Okay, we're gonna start down here. Go ahead, Commissioner Robinson.
So you're showing us this from the, because of the last conversation that we had in the last meeting, is that why you're showing this?
Correct.
Okay, so when you're saying, you said fair is goes up to like five to eight years, so we're talking 2020. I will, I do want to make a comment that some roads, that we're widening a lot of roads, and some roads are near the interstate, some are not, some are more in the rural area, so I don't kind of look at those, but the ones that are near 75, 675, again, as we talked about the cut through, there's a lot of wear and tear on top of that where we are now, so I just want to make that clear, because we're talking 2020. So I'll pass it over to Commissioner Thomas, but if I have anything else, then I'll come back, but I just want to make that statement.
Rocky, when you talk about roads and the grading system, do you know if the municipalities are using a similar type of rating system, or are we the only one in the county using it, do you know?
I can't speak for the cities, but I know the state, G-DOT, they use PACES, which is similar to this, it's also a grading system.
So when you say that we have almost 1,200 miles of roads, you're really talking about county roads?
That's correct, just county roads, no cities, no state roads.
Okay, and there are opportunities, which I have been not directly asked about, but has been put in other social medias, about doing roads in this county. Have you been asked by any of the municipalities to do any rating system so that we can do some joint projects at all?
You mean paving, or?
No, with the rating system.
With the rating system? I'm not aware of.
Not aware of any, nor am I aware of any myself, that's why I wanted to ask. Another thing is, when we decide to do these roads, because we have a system that's more scientific and more of a mythology right now, this is a way to prevent some people from saying, "They never do my side of town, they never do my roads," but you have a system here in place, correct?
That's correct, and we do have all the information on our, if you, the citizens go to the Henry County DOT website, we do have the rating in the website by its alphabetically order.
So they can find their road rating?
They can find the road, if they want, if you want to go and see what Jonesboro looks at, you can go on the site, website, and you can find Jonesboro Road, yes.
On that, and since you have it posted, have we gotten to the point where we can project when some work will be done on certain roads on that site as well?
We're not there yet, and it's due to funding, right? We have limited source of funding, so it's hard to project, because it depends on how much funding we have per year, so it's hard to predict when are we going to do certain roads. So basically, we're on a year-to-year base on resurfacing.
Based on budgets, you can tell then what you can do for that coming year?
Correct.
And when that particular project could probably be done. But the most important thing, they can find these roads on the website and find the ratings there, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, because it has been stated almost like we're being neglectful as a county and not doing what we're supposed to do, it comes down to work on these particular roads. Another thing is, Rocky, there are different funds that's used for different roads, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so what may be a SLOSS dollar, may not be an L-MIC dollar, which may not be a general operations dollar, and that's something that would have to be revealed when the project is defined, is that correct?
That's correct, and just to let you know, in the last three years, we spent over $50 million worth of resurfacing, and that's using SLOSS, T-SLOSS, L-MIC, and general fund.
$50 million?
Over $50 million.
That the county did.
Correct.
That's a lot of money, and I think you take a very good care of trying to make sure you get information out there to our general public about this, and thank you so much for letting it be known where they can get this information at, and thank you for this information to the board, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky. Next, we have appointments, McIntosh Trail appointments, Lieutenant Steve Rotello, Henry County, PD to fill unexpired term on the McIntosh Trail Board to 8/21/24. I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second. Got a motion, a second. Any questions? Discussion here and now, and all in favor? Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. I think that what I would like to do is, Sheri, we have someone, we have a, someone that signed up, correct, Stephanie? Colton White, are you here? Okay, Colton White, if you could come forward, and you have three minutes to address the board with comments.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to come out here, my name's Colton White, I'm a former graduate of the Accountability Court, and I just wanted to tell every single one of y'all that I really appreciate y'all and thank y'all for the funding and support that y'all showed to them, and I wanted to speak on like an underdog story, everybody loves an underdog story, and that's what Craig and his team does, or they do with every individual that comes through there, they'll take a person like myself that has a rap sheet a mile long, and that, you know, nobody sees a way that they could turn their life around, and they help give them the, they'll take a shell this selfish person that has no substance, and they'll give you the fundamentals and the building blocks that, you know, you have to do to build your life back up, and now, you know, I broke my quality of life, and I'm, I mean, sorry, nervous, but I changed my quality of life and broke that stigma that, you know, I grew up around and thinking I had to run around with and do all this, all this wrong, and after going through that program, you know, now, me and several other people that hold the same standard, that went through the same walk that I did, now we pour back into our community, now we're doing stuff for a friend's house, now we're holding, hosting softball tournaments to get to needy families that just had a house burned down, I mean, now that we're giving back to our community instead of taking from it, and it all started with that program right there, and I've done the rehab, I've done the jails, I've even been to prison, and none of those things ever put a dent in it, you know, it's just kind of like, you can go through the situation of going through incarceration and stuff, but it's not really having the know-how of surviving in a daily life and being a productive member of society when you get out, so there's really no help there, and that's what I'm saying, the Accountability Court helped me get those building blocks and showed me what I needed to do, because I grew up in it from such a young age, just like several other people have, and they basically, you know, taught us how to do our taxes, get jobs, I mean, it's so much that, you know, we just grew up, we just didn't, didn't come across, you know, and some people are getting their life together, and they're 40, 50, 60 years in, you know, and they're still making those changes, and they're making strides, like it's not just little movements, they're making huge strides to where they're able to come back and give back to the community, and I just want to appreciate y'all and the time, bam, getting there, sorry, I appreciate it, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. White. So it is proof that these programs work. If we could have our county manager come forward and read our consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board, this is your consent agenda for Tuesday, February 20th, 6:30 PM. Under the Courts, Juvenile Court, we have a resolution authorizing the Henry County Juvenile Court to apply for a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to fund the Juvenile Mental Health Court for fiscal year 2025. Under the Veterans Treatment Court, we have a resolution authorizing the Henry County Veterans Treatment Court to apply for a grant from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2025. Under the Resource Court, we have a resolution authorizing the Henry County Resource Court to apply for a grant from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2025. And under the Adult Felony Drug Court, we have a resolution authorizing the Henry County Adult Felony Drug Court to apply for a grant from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2025. Under the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving an application to the EPD Hazardous Waste Trust Fund for reimbursement costs or portion thereof associated with the closed Henry County Solid Waste Landfill, West Asbury Road, Phase 2, MSWLF. Under Financial Services, we have a resolution requesting the Board of Commissioners approval to accept a one-time payment of $1,000 from the Henry County Board of Education to the Henry County School Resource Officers. Under SLOSS, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation Estimated Costs for McDonough Parkway in the amount of $164,744 utilizing SLOSS 5 funding. We also have a condemnation for the Western Parallel Connector Parcel Number 11. We also have another condemnation for the Western Parallel Connector Parcel Number 13. Under Stormwater, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of a Caterpillar 309 hydraulic excavator in the amount of $158,824 from Yancey Brothers CO utilizing Stormwater Enterprise Funds. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions regarding any items on the consent agenda that need to be removed? Okay, go ahead.
I just have a question, thank you for recognizing the chair. County manager, just had a question about the resolution for the one-time payment for the Board of Education, is that just $1,000 total, or is that $1,000 per resource officer?
That is $1,000 per resource office, officer, sorry, yes, sir.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
And that is coming from the Board of Education?
That is correct, they've already remitted payment, and we have to officially accept it.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, all right.
That's it.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Financial Services Resolution, Amending Resolution 24-46 Regarding FY '24 Mid-Year Budget Adjustment for Clarification Purposes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, and the Henry County community. What you have before you is a resolution to further clarify Resolution 2446, providing more specifics on how one half of the approximately $7.5 million that is designated for Commissioners and the Chair from our projected amended fiscal year 2024 budget fund balance will be used, and also adding a missed transfer from closure of Cotton Fields Enterprise Fund. At the February 6, 2024 Board Meeting, Commissioner Lewis made a motion to approve Resolution 2446, he wanted to add additional language that 50% of the approximate $7.5 million that was designated for fund balance be a portion equally between the Commissioners and the Chair. This motion was seconded, carried, approving the resolution, but leaving several questions. This slide outlines those questions and staff's recommendations. For example, are we setting aside 50% of the projected fund balance or 50% of the final fund balance? What is the limit on that set aside, are we going to utilize it? What are the immediate needs regarding road improvements in each district that currently exist so that we can address the matters facing the community? And then, what is the specific date for the funds to be expended? Included in this particular slide are some of the recommendations. Staff is currently recommending approval of this recommendation, of this resolution by one, increasing the DOT budget by $3.75 million for the amended fiscal year to be spent by June 30th, 2024. Also having staff prepare a list, and you've seen a presentation by our Cluster Lead, Mr. Romero, where he prepared a list of distressed roads that are in each district, and limiting spending to those immediate repairs, and any unexpended balance does not roll forward into any new years. I'm prepared for any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yes. Could you go back to that previous slide? I just had one question. The... The, the last part, we say any unexpended balance at six thirty, twenty twenty-four does not roll forward. So once, once it does move over into the DOT budget, each Commissioner will go to our DOT and identify the projects that they want done. So when you say not expended, meaning we identify, like, maybe the money hasn't been spent, but is identified, where is it going to be spent?
So, so my intent is for it to be spent by the end of the fiscal year, by June thirtieth?
Okay, so... What if our intent is to spend it, but it hasn't been spent by that date? Like, if I, if I identify a project, if I sit down with, with Mr. Simmons and I identify a product, but it hasn't been spent by June thirtieth?
There will be no rollover, is my proposal.
Okay, that's, that's problematic in a way, because, because it, if we identify where we want to be spent, but it doesn't get spent, then that kind of takes away the, the point of this, I guess.
My understanding was the point was to address immediate needs. And so by identifying those immediate needs between now and June thirtieth and addressing them, I think we can accomplish that goal.
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm just looking at if there's inclement weather that is, would possibly push that back in the event for that. So what is the consideration if that happens?
So, Mr. Simmons, Johnny, because I need, what I want the board to be clear about is, once we have a contract, then that will obligate those funds. It may not be construction, but once we have the contract, we should be good to go. And the Public Works Director has given me a thumbs up. Once they sit down with you all in the next couple of days, we're going to go ahead and get that contract out, and then get it awarded, and we should be good to go.
That was my question, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
So, okay, Johnny, go ahead.
Shouldn't we be hearing from David here soon about the El McMoney contract coming up? And we can add that to?
Yes, sir.
Could we add that too? Or do we have enough time to? To add it to that particular resolution?
We're going to be adding roads to it, so I don't know if you have enough time. Rocky's going to approach, and David.
Okay.
So to your question, Commissioner, if we have a list of projects, which we have a list, what we can do is amend the contract, because we have line items, so everything is line items. Basically, it's going to be a change order. And being that it's a change order, we can, we can have three point seven five, right? So we should be able to spend the money. Because we do have a contract, we can do a change order for that amount based on, on the roads that Commissioners select.
So that shouldn't be an issue spending it before daylight?
It shouldn't be an issue. It's just, as long as we have a contract, you know, it could last six months, it could last three months. Depending on the weather, the better the weather, the more work we can do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So here's an option on the table. Commit the three point seven million to DOT budget and put the projects out for bid right away. We will follow the road rating plan and process and hold the county manager and DOT accountable to get these projects done. This will allow us to address the immediate needs identified by Commissioners, and we will work with our city partners to make a comprehensive list of road projects for plots for SPOSS Six. Can I get a motion for, for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. No discussion, all in favor?
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, David.
Much appreciated.
And Sherri, that, that takes care of the amendment to that resolution, correct?
That is correct. And staff will follow up with each Commissioner tomorrow to go ahead and start looking at that road list so that we can try to get those projects added on. Thank you.
Is that good?
Awesome, yeah, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager.
Thank you.
Okay. Regular Agenda, Financial, Parks and Recreation. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners supporting the Unity Grove Rosenwall School Preservation Initiative. Presenter is our Cluster Lead, Jonathan Penn.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. Before you have a resolution to support the Rosenwall School Initiative, Preservation Initiative, for those that are not familiar with Rosenwall Schools, these schools were created by Julius Rosenwald and Booker T. Washington for African-American students. Henry County once had six of these Rosenwall Schools, and now there's only one remaining, and it's in Locust Grove. And so we have an alliance, the Henry County Arts Alliance, that have come together to preserve this treasure in Henry County. The idea is for it to be restored and moved to the, potentially moved to the school site upon Board of Education approval. So this resolution is just to support the efforts of the group to move forward and also provide additional, they will be able to apply for grants with the support of the different counties, the support of the county and different cities within the county. And to my understanding, some of the cities have already adopted resolutions or proclamations in their support as well. So we are here to do the same. I know that we have Ms. June Wood here, who's the Chair of the Alliance. You want to come up and speak a little bit?
Are there other members here from the Rosenwall?
Commissioner Johnny Wilson.
I know, I know our Vice Chair, Commissioner Johnny Wilson, has been a huge instrumental in a lot of this work that has been done. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson, for what you've done.
Well, let me first say greetings, Chair and Board of Commissioners. Just thank you for your service.
Yes, former Chair.
So first of all, thank you all for the opportunity to entertain this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Penn, for helping us to formulate the resolution and bringing the history of why this is significant for Henry County. As he's mentioned, Julius Rosenwall and Booker T. Washington actually established these schools back in the nineteen thirties, per se. And there were over fifty-three hundred of these schools in the rural South so that African-Americans could have a good quality education. But what was interesting about this whole process is that Mr. Rosenwald, who was the philanthropist working with Booker T. Washington, said the blacks had to raise four hundred dollars, the whites had to raise four hundred dollars, and either some form of government had to come together. So he literally brought the community together so that they could establish these funding opportunities. This is a picture of the school that is actually standing. And we say that there were six. I know that Smith Barnes Elementary in Stockbridge area has been converted, you know, to protect that Rosenwall property. But what has been a blessing about this is that this is the school. The University of Georgia has come in and assessed the quality of it. I mean, it's made of great materials. We have, of course, the N double A C P, who's also supported a proclamation, the City of Hampton, the City of Locust Grove, the City of McDonough, City of Stockbridge, and, and we're coming before the Board this evening asking for your support to help us preserve this beautiful jewel that the Board of Education is also very much involved to help us make this a center of education for the community, but to also use it as a museum to go back and value what significance of education does to a community regardless of your race. So we are honored that we're here. Actually, we were at the State Capitol today speaking about this. And again, there is a great opportunity throughout the South to preserve these schools, but again, to help bring the communities together. So we've still got a lot of work to do. The Department of Community Affairs is also engaged with us in this. And so it's a grassroots group that is wanting to continue to preserve history here in Henry County. And this is just one of the projects that we will begin with. So I would love to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Chair, but one of the things that has been amazing is that we have been in contact with the former Rosenwall students and have interviewed them and captured their history. We have a preservation plan, and here are some of the students that we've, we've been involved in. And so again, we're still trying to honor them as well. So thank you.
Commissioner Johnny Wilson, I know that you are part of this, of this committee as well. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, ma'am. We, with the board and the, with our planning committee, we have, were able to raise the money to purchase this school from the owners. So we was able to do that last year. So now, we, we own the school. Now we just got to raise enough money where we can move it and preserve it. So that's, that's the mission we're on now. So, thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Planning and Zoning, RZ dash twenty-three dash seventeen. Alan Grant of Stockbridge, Georgia requests a rezoning for RA to C two.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and citizens of Henry County. The rezoning request in front of you is for property located at three five six five Highway one fifty-five North and thirteen Reagan Road, south of Kellytown Road, within the Kellytown Community Center. The subject property is highlighted on the overhead maps. The zoning is currently RA, and the future land use designation is Village. And the property is directly across from the Highway one fifty-five, Kellytown Publix. The applicant is requesting to rezone thirty-three point eight-two plus or minus acres from RA Residential Agricultural to C two General Commercial to allow for a commercial complex. Currently, the subject properties are developed with single-family residences and a commercial Christmas tree farm. Any proposed commercial use for the subject property would require a commercial zoning district, and the subject property is within the limits of the Highway Corridor Overlay District and would be required to meet those standards. The future land use designation of the property is Village and would support the rezoning request to C two. The Village future land use designation is intended to support community centers in outlying areas. These nodes can include a variety of uses, including commercial office and housing, and a walkable, people-oriented environment. The general theory is that placing villages of commercial in our community centers will encourage citizens to shop, work, and play closer to their homes rather than having them drive to I seventy-five and add to the existing congestion. Kellytown is considered a community center in our comprehensive plan. These community centers should vary depending on their context. In the more rural areas, they should be low-intensity commercial concentrated at key intersections with well-connected, context-sensitive, residential-adjacent. In more established suburban areas, community centers are visioned to be mixed-use, vertical or horizontal, but with an emphasis on neighborhood, community-level, commercial development, and enhanced walkability. The proposed concept is intended to push the commercial buildings closer to the street to allow for internal parking and increase walkability. The detention ponds are also intended to be an intentional feature of the development with enhanced landscaping and walkability. Here's a better view of the proposed development. And here is the general style of the architecture that's being proposed by the applicant. The zoning advisory board did recommend approval of the rezoning request with additional conditions that staff did incorporate into the resolution that you'll see today. Staff has evaluated the case and considered the character of the area, the comprehensive plan, current and future development, current and future infrastructure demands, and access to services and resources. Staff recommends approval with the following ten conditions. I'd like to turn your attention to a couple of the conditions, particularly number six. At the zoning advisory board meeting, there were some concerns from the citizens to the west of this property who have houses right behind the Christmas tree farm currently. So we decided to go in and tweak our buffer requirements to help them out a bit. So this condition basically requires that they keep a lot of the buffer undisturbed. Where it's not sufficient, they will add a berm with some trees on top of it, and they're going to add a fence outside of that, right in between the parking and the berm or the landscape buffer. So that should offer plenty of protection for the residents right behind the development. And again, the Village Commercial designation is designed to create centers for people to go to so that they can have all their amenities in one place rather than sprawling out throughout the county. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Can you go back?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, on this one right here, does that include dollar stores and that stuff too? I don't see that on here.
So dollar stores are already addressed in our ULDC.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because you have it here, you have these here. I just want to make sure, no dollar stores, ponds, shops, that kind of stuff?
Yes, ma'am. Those are prohibited through the ULDC naturally.
All right, and then the, go back to your slide. That one.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, does this exit come out on, okay, so you have a exit that comes out on one fifty-five?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you have an exit that comes out on the side?
You have two exits on one fifty-five, and they're across from the Publix, and that's a requirement regardless for development. And then you have another access on the other side, which is Kellytown?
So... So is this, this is across the street from the Publix?
Yes, ma'am, directly across the street.
So how will this impact the traffic during school hours? Because there is a school directly at that intersection. And I know, because I travel that in the morning, taking my grandson to school at Woodland, so...
So, and I'm certain the applicant will speak more to this as well, but this, this is traffic that would be generally seen on a commercial development on a highway. So it will impact traffic to some extent. But I believe the applicant does have further details on that.
I mean, but that's, that is the school zone there. You've got kids that could or could not be crossing the street. That's a concern for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, it is, and there's signalized intersection. So when you come to that intersection where that school is and where the Kellytown Publix is, where that property is, I believe SPOSS actually improved that intersection, so it is signalized today.
And that I understand, but, you know, it doesn't stop people from speeding through school zones. And, you know, that's, that's going to create a lot of traffic in that school zone. And, you know, we just recently had an incident in a school zone that don't have commercial. But I'm going to open it up for public comment, because this is a public hearing. Those that wish to speak in favor of the development, please come forward and state your name. And you have ten minutes collectively.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Steve Moore with Moore Bass Consulting, thirteen fifty Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia. Here tonight representing Mr. Alan Grant. Just to give you a brief, brief context, for those of you who don't know, and I'm sure you do, Yule Forest has been a fixture in this community for many years, thirty-plus years. And Mr. Grant has run that business and has finally reached a point where he's ready to retire and move on and has been very instrumental in the comp plan process that we worked through with TSW and with, with staff over the last year, really trying to kind of fine-tune this area of the county and, and provide this activity center, which, again, is, I think, very appropriate for the area. But I wanted to, only because Mr. Grant, like I said, he's put his blood, sweat, and tears into this piece of property for the last thirty-plus years. I wanted him to speak for just a few minutes and just kind of give you some context too, so Alan, if you want to...
Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board. Thank you so much for hearing me tonight. We, last year, we spent most of the year working with the consulting firm that did the comp plan. And it was really, really wonderful, all the input that all of the citizens got to put in. This Village aspect is certainly an answer for a lot of things. To address you specifically, Madam Chair, the, we were designated a special event, twelve... To address you specifically, Madam Chair, the, we were designated a special event, 12A in 2012. And that had to address some population and some traffic flow and that sort of thing, even before that traffic light was there. And at the time, I employed five different sheriffs to take care of crowds and traffic. And Yule Forest, in that special event that I presented here for that permanent special event permit, we mentioned we have four to 5,000 a day come into the farm. And we didn't want to see a high-end city residential place here. Farm's been for sale for quite a while, but we did not want to see that. This is a perfect fit for us. The impact traffic-wise is not going to be much, because of, in our season, we are very, very busy. And so, anyway, we really did like the village aspect of things. There's some other folks that want to speak. They, we think it's a good fit, and it's a good complement to the Publix across the street.
Thank you, Alan. So, and again, and I will get into a little bit more of the specifics on the, some of the uses and the traffic and whatnot. But, so this is just a vicinity map showing the relation of the property to the existing Publix. And this, I felt was appropriate, just as a context, of the size and shape. As you can see, it's very consistent. As the, as the Publix development continues to develop to the south, they'll fill in these out parcels, and it will be very complimentary of, of what we're proposing. This is, Kamal's already showed, is the rendering of this, of this development. And there's just a kind of a bird's eye view of the same. So, Madam Chair, we are, have two accesses, both of which line up and will match the scale and size of the existing accesses across at the public shopping center. This is the northern access. It would be a right-in, right-out access. And as you can see, that entrance would be heavily landscaped, tree-lined. And then this would be the southern entrance, which would be a full access, again, same size, scale as the one directly across the street. So, the largest kind of anchor retail space is in the far back of the project. And then, this is representative elevation of that building. And then, as you move closer to 155, they're, the, kind of the buildings scale down in size. Those would be more suitable for some smaller retail space or office space. And then there's some elevations of those buildings. That's the one on the north side of the, of the development. And then, as you move to 155, in working with staff, again, trying to be consistent with the future lane, or with the comp plan, we've got all these buildings tucked up to the road with a parking in the rear, which should provide a very nice streetscape along 155. So, the project is in the highway overlay district. And so, we'll have the 10-foot multi-use path and the pedestrian lighting and the 10-foot landscape strip along the entire frontage of 155. And again, as you can see there, that'll provide really good screening for the, you know, landscape, streetscape along that Highway 155 path. So, this was another thing that we worked with staff on, and I appreciate Kamal's input, because I think this is a great addition, is we have a north-south and east-west pedestrian designated, very large path that connects the Publix to this development and provides internal access north and south. That is a completely separate access from roads, from traffic, from parking, everything, with the exception of where it crosses over a driveway in a couple of places. But, would be a very safe pedestrian access to be able to serve this development. And again, in harmony with the comp plan and the walkability component. So, as Mr. Grant mentioned earlier, this was just a picture I took off of his website, but that shows a busy day at, at the farm. They have several peak seasons throughout the year. They do the tulip festival, they do the pumpkin patch, they do the Christmas tree farm, et cetera. And as, this is a copy of the resolution where he obtained for the special use permit as an event center. Same thing that Southern Bell Farms has done. If you've driven past Southern Bell Farms on a Saturday afternoon, it's hard to get down that road with all the traffic. So, very similar use. And again, during that presentation, he indicated up to 5,000 trips a day that they see during peak season. So, we're appreciative of staff recommending approval. We were thankful to get a unanimous approval at the, or recommendation from the zoning advisory board. We've read through all of the conditions, they're all acceptable. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to this young lady who wants to say something about the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Sheridan McGee. I am a member of the community nearby. I live on Kellytown Road in the neighborhood, Pebblebrook, with my husband and my daughter and another daughter on the way. And I just wanted to bring light that we have really enjoyed the newly-developed Publix, and we are looking forward to new retail coming to the area. It has been very convenient, and we haven't had to travel super far anymore to get groceries or something local to eat. So, that's been really nice. And, yeah, that's basically what we just been looking forward to this. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Priscilla Beryl. I'm here tonight with my husband Wayne. We live at the property just in the corner up to the northeast of there, which is 105 Reagan Road. On one of the previous maps, you would see that we kind of square off that whole corner there. And I will initially admit that we were quite nervous at first when we saw that there were things happening with the farm. But, once we saw the beautiful plans that they had, we have two small girls that are five and eight, and as you mentioned, traffic can get pretty speedy through there. We cannot ride our bikes. We cannot walk safely on the sidewalk without mama having a heart attack. So, I have enjoyed the thought of us being able to take our girls into that area where it is so walkable, where you have a nice lawn that protects our kids from traffic, where we could actually go ride our bikes and get some outdoor time, maybe even have a little picnic in the lawn. We do have quite a large yard, but, you know, kids are, they want to go. So, we shown, we shown them the pictures from the last meeting. They were very excited. And we have also enjoyed the Publix being very convenient for us. We were initially nervous about that as well, but it has proven to be a good addition for our family. And knowing that there are prohibited businesses that we wouldn't want at our front door really settled our nerves immediately. And then just seeing, we, we love nature, we're avid gardeners. We love that it's going to be so heavily landscaped. We're very happy to see the water features would attract birds and wildlife in, in small regard. And it wouldn't be putting this huge man-made footprint on our map, because they're adding back in the natural aspect. So, we are very excited about it, and because of all of those things, we're very happy, fully supportive of the grants and their plans. Thank you.
Really quickly, my name is Stephanie, and I live on 1220 Miller's Mill Road, just around the corner from here. We, my husband and I have four children, and we are very excited for the new development here as well. We've also enjoyed the Publix and the restaurants that are there. And we're looking forward to new restaurants and maybe some extracurricular activities for the kids. We currently have to drive a little ways to get our kids to extracurricular activities. So, I was thinking that it would be really nice to have maybe a dance studio, ballet, or something like that over there. And maybe some retail stores where I could quickly go in and get a birthday present that I forgot maybe last minute. But, we're really excited and we're supportive of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Likewise, we'd like to ask that if there's anyone here to speak in opposition, please come forward. And you have a collective time of 10 minutes to speak in opposition.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
I'm in opposition of this development. My name is Steve Robinson. I live directly, directly behind this development. There's no matter trees, conveniency for smog. This area is increasing. On Miller's Mill, they have maybe four new developments coming in. That's going to bring more cars. 155 right now, after 2 o'clock, as you mentioned about school, people don't pay attention to it. It's heavy. Quality of life, I understand, not in stopping anybody making money and do what they have to do. But sometimes you have to sit back around, how does it affect everyone? I have the option, someone to say, hey, just move. But I have to be there. I own my house. There is no mortgage on my house. I own mine. I work hard for mine, and I understand progress. But some things, sometime we have to stop. The young lady said about dance studio. You're not going to get a dancer there, somebody else is going to get the dance studio. I don't even get the opportunity to say, hey, maybe I can get a little business there. I'm out. Because I wasn't at the beginning at the table when they made the deal. They said they did an evaluation, assessment, they knocked on my door. I understand this young man's property during October, November, he has an event, Halloween, they ride around late at night, no problem. Couple of weeks later, it's over. But the other months, it's quiet. Bringing in this type of stuff from there, people who don't live there, live by, don't see it, just like I don't see in their neighborhood. If they want to scale it back a little bit, fine. But everybody's praising Publix. Publix took a shot. I can walk to Publix. I can walk to Publix, I'm happy as hell. But that's not what I'm talking about. Cars bring emission, that's why they get to have your car checked out. It's in the air. They don't put a wall mark in certain areas because of the cars. That's the health issue. Your lady, they said about their kids, don't realize, it's in the air. I am not against progress. Understand, I'm not against progress, I'm not against a person making money. But some things have to be understood when people live in that area. Right now, that school, at one time, I couldn't hear the kids playing. Springtime comes, everybody, kids are out all day. Now, I can hear and see them because of the trees. Life, trees are falling. So, what they're going to do, come in and put new trees? Trees have a beginning and an end. All is just be conscious of what we doing. I'm not going to get, I am not against progress. But I am against certain things that's going to affect all of us. There is going to be heavy traffic. There's heavy traffic at 2 o'clock on 155. They're not telling you all that. Every single day, there's traffic. More and more cars are in that area. With the development down in Locust Grove, everybody need to put this puzzle together, connect the dots, this traffic. They can't get on 75 or 65, they're backing up, they're 138, 155, and they're going south. Why? I seen it. There's certain times of the day, I can, I don't even come out my house to get on the highway, because I can't get back in the, back in my area. All I'm saying, I'm not against progress. But I'm not going to sit here and tolerate people just going to act like nothing's going down. Henry County, in the last couple of years, it is growing. It is growing. What comes with growth, comes with cars, families, homes, and jobs. So, it might look good today, but given some time, you're going to see a change. They said that, change is going to come someday. Thank you.
State your name.
Good evening. My name is Rakita Thorhill. I'll be quick. So, I'm here actually with my daughter for youth leadership, so I was not expecting any of this. But, I did want to bring attention to something I saw on one of the slides here, because I have two daughters at Woodland High School. And I saw a proposal for vape shops. So, that would be a concern of mine. It was on the slide up here.
Put it back up, it says no. No.
Oh, so no vape shops?
No.
Okay, good. So, I thought I saw vape shops, I'm sorry. I just had a concern about that being close to the high schools.
Go back to that slide, because I want you to see it.
Okay.
No ma'am. We're not... That's a hard no for me.
Oh, okay.
I think Kamal was on your thing, under conditions.
I got to get through Steve's 100 slides. Okay. So, the number nine is prohibited uses.
Gotcha. Okay, alright, I just wanted to...
Prohibited.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Okay. Could you go back to the slide that shows the interest in exits? I just had one other question.
Yes ma'am. Is this a good one for you?
I thi, I think so. The one that's coming out on the side on Kellytown, is that in alignment with where the school entrance is?
So, it looks like that, what it is, you have to align them for traffic flow. But, this strange cul-de-sac here, I want to say GDOT owns it. And I believe the applicant is trying to get them to abandon it, to maybe have a buffer area there as well. But it does align across from the school, yes ma'am. And it's required to have a traffic impact study, as, as usual.
And if the traffic impact study comes back and tell them to do something different along Kellytown, then they, they will have to do it?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. I would like to see that study when it comes back.
Yes ma'am.
Because, you know, my own, I think the development is, I mean, it, you know, it's, it is what it is, but my, my only concern are the children at the school.
Yes ma'am.
With that, well, Commissioner Anglin, this is in your district, so I'm going to let you take the lead and move, move forward, how you see fit.
Just make a couple of comments. Thank you, Kamal. I think I always like to make sure I know, my job's not to advocate nor necessarily promote. But what I will say is, working with the applicant on this is a breath of fresh air, because they truly do care about the surrounding community. And with that, they were very willing to make the amendments that, or conditions we agreed to, which is the preserving the green space, which is the trees that you see in the middle there, the larger walking paths. Also, I think it's important to understand that they didn't go after any multifamily, because as we have held in District 3 that we're not doing any multifamily. So, I want to tell them thank you on that. With that being said, I think it's important to know that the community did support the future land use map with these village centers. They want to see more of this in those areas we identified in the flume. So, with that being said, I also want to say thank you for the fencing in the back, the additional barriers. There were no questions on that from the applicant when we asked. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Kamal. Thank you, staff.
Commissioner Robinson.
I just have a question. So, the gentleman that stood up here, and he was basically saying in his, his property, the trees were removed, are we making any conditions or something to support or at least try to help that community? Can you tell me what you were doing with that?
Yes ma'am.
Because that's basically what I kept hearing him say.
Yeah, so, condition six, basically, in the past, we had a, a buffer condition where it would just simply state, the buffer must be undisturbed or enhanced. Well, that leaves a lot of room to interpretation. So, we decided to craft the new buffer condition that says, where it's not enhanced, where the vegetation isn't thick enough, you have to go in and add a whole new berm with trees on top of it. And then on top of that, where the parking lot starts, well, where the drive starts, they have to have a six-foot fence along that area as well. So, not only do you have trees that have been there for a long a long time, but you have a new berm and new trees where it's not sufficient, and a fence as well.
And thank you for that. And I guess he left, so whoever's in that community, hopefully they can hear this, that you are doing something, um, to support those concerns. Um, and I hate he left, so that way you'll, at least he would know that you were considering that as well. So thank you guys for doing that.
Commissioner Anglin.
I just want to make a comment on that. The applicant actually went through and identified the areas that he had concerns that weren't thick enough. And that was appreciative, where more vegetation needed to be. So the applicant actually addressed it, yeah, themselves.
That's what he said. Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Thomas.
One question. In your plan, and I think it's a nice plan, did you, for your buffers near 155, have you considered that? I think there is an expansion coming on at 155. So those buffers built in, to consider that expansion?
Yes, ma'am. They're outside of the right-of-way. So any improvements GDOT needs to make, GDOT takes a look at this plan before permits go out. So any improvements that need to be made, any right-of-way that needs to be acquired, they handle that on the front end. But this plan, conceptually, is outside of that right-of-way.
Just want to make it public. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Anglin.
Uh, any more questions? Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is SPOSS item. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving a proposal for Architecture Unlimited for Additional Services.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Uh, before you is a resolution approving a proposal for Construction Administration and Construction Inspection Services for the Aquatic Center. So the, uh, Aquatic Center and Outdoor Water Park is currently an approved SPOSS 5 project that I'm happy to report is, uh, in progress. Trees are being cleared. And, uh, Architecture Unlimited, um, is the architect of record for this project. And they have submitted a proposal for additional services in the amount of $168,750 for Construction Administration and Construction Inspection Services for the duration of the project, which has been, uh, identified to be a two-year project. Um, the special inspections are required by Chapter 17 of the International Building Code, and these will be covered by this service and are a requirement of the state minimum construction codes. Um, this also covers weekly onsite visits for the entire duration of the construction, and also all their, uh, engineers, uh, coming at, in critical points to inspect everything, to make sure everything is being done according to plan. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So basically, these additional services is something that we have to do for, by code, for code?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. I get a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor. Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Um, already had public comment. Upcoming meeting, um, okay. Need to do approval of the minutes for January 16, 2024, and J-, uh, for the regular BLC, and then for the call BLC. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor. Okay. And then our upcoming meetings and events, March 5th is our 9:00 AM regular scheduled board meeting. March 19th, uh, at 6:30 is our regular scheduled BLC meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Okay. It, 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 it helps when people...